Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Tuesday, April 8, 2020, 2025. Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Meeting here at the atrium. I am Vice Chair Wayne Fournier. In the room with me, I have Commissioner Grant. I'll be serving as Chair until the Chair arrives, who is in traffic. And we have Commissioner Emily Klaus on Zoom. Today's agenda, we will begin with a review of the Board of County Commissioners Agenda for April 15, 2025. Meeting will begin at 2:00 PM. We have one public hearing scheduled at 3:30. Meeting be called to order. Pledge of Allegiance will be led by District 3 Commissioner, which is Klaus or Grant? Who's 3?
Ty.
Ty. Commissioner Mensah.
I don't know.
Commissioner Mensah will lead the Pledge of Allegiance, follow a land acknowledgement and approval of agenda. First order will be presentations. We'll have a proclamation for Volunteer Appreciation Month.
Good morning, Commissioners. Amy Davis, Clerk of the Board. For Volunteer Appreciation Month, we are planning a volunteer fair here in the atrium. We will have several, a variety of organizations that rely on volunteers here in the open atrium area. They'll be tabled for the afternoon and multiple presenters will join us for the board meeting to speak during the proclamation presentation.
Sounds great. After the presentation, we'll have a public comment, County Manager's update, anything to note?
Nothing to report.
All right. You can jump in whenever you're ready. We are on County Manager's Update on the April 15 Agenda. Okay, awesome.
I'm sorry, maybe while we transition, just one correction that we have two public hearings on April 15. And on Consent Item 5, Darren Bennett is listed as the contact for the item. And it is actually Bruce Robro, Interim Director of Central Services. So that will be corrected.
You also want to mention, or I don't know if Commissioner Klaus will want to mention it, but the request to move from consent to department items?
Commissioner Klaus has submitted requests to potentially pull several items from the consent agenda to department items.
Commissioner Klaus, did you want to cover those yourself or did you want the clerk to cover those?
Or do we want to go over them as we get to them?
I am walking in right now, so I'll cover those in just a second.
So we're up to just first Consent Item 1? Okay, so first one would be contract award for Mottman 1, Processing, Ballot Processing Center, Furniture Fixtures and Equipment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tony Shaw, Capital Project Manager with Central Services. Last Friday, you were sent an E-brief explaining the program phases of the election security upgrades at the Mottman Complex. This item before you will be Phase 3, which is Furniture Fixtures and Equipment. And we are utilizing the cooperative contract through Department of Enterprise Services. The funding source for this program is Public Safety Sales Tax and it has been approved on the 2025, 2030 CIP. I'm here for any questions. Awesome, thank you.
Item 2, Lease Extension for North Point Industries LLC. North Point with an E.
Good morning, Bruce Robro, Interim Central Services Director here for the next four items. This one in particular is an amendment to a lease with a tenant in the Mottman Complex. When the county purchased three buildings in 2021, county assumed the leases with the buildings. The county has two tenants remaining with one lease ending this year. And this lease with an option for the tenant to extend until 2030. This lease exercises the tenant's option to extend and updates the rate to fair market value determined by research done by our capital facilities team. And I am available to answer any questions about this item.
Questions on Item 2? I thought, I thought we were moving folks out.
We are, so there is two tenants remaining. One tenant will be leaving this year. Tenant who processes food next to the auditor's voter registration.
The current voter registration.
Yes. And this tenant is in the building, which is occupied by facilities and.
Do we have numbers or letters for those buildings that we?
We do, they're numbered 1 through 3.
Left or right?
And I cannot recall which order they're numbered in.
We can get a map sent. Facilities is the other side or what is it? The back one? It's like 3, right, in the horseshoe?
Yep, so there's a horseshoe. On one side is the voter registration center. Opposite is the ballot processing center. And then facilities is the base of the horseshoe. Think of it this way.
Okay.
And this tenant is in the base of the horseshoe in the same building as facilities.
And we're good having them within.
Yes, long-term plan is for facilities to expand into that space to manage the surplus program.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Item 3, NPP Gov Cooperative Membership.
Next item is for Central Services to donate national cooperative chairman organization offering publicly solicited contracts to government entities nationwide. This will give the county access to additional competitively bid contracts to save time, get better volume discounts and access a larger pool of vendors. Membership is free. And I'm available to answer any questions on this item.
Any questions on Item 3? Is this a new relationship for us or?
Yes, this will be a new cooperative purchasing.
Okay, let's go on 4 then. Setting a public hearing for proposed ordinance, amending Thurston County Code 2.104 to regulate disposition of public property for affordable housing.
Good morning, Rick Thomas, Capital Projects Planning Manager. By going forward with this amendment to the county code, this would give the Commissioners the opportunity to use surplus property for affordable housing and other types of public benefit for housing and potentially for the homeless. Commissioners be glad to answer that.
So what would be the process? How does this work?
So the process, the first thing we would need to do before we could actually surplus any property is to amend the existing ordinance for property. Basically that County Code 2.104 gives many different line items in regards to how you can use or sell property. We need to add this amendment to that code in order to allow us to be able to dispose of surplus property specifically for affordable housing types of options. And so we would need to set a public hearing. We're hoping that will be May the 6th, at which time there'd be a public hearing. County Commissioners would like to at that point. They could also approve this addendum to our county code. Following that, we would come back to the board because we do have one opportunity right now to surplus some property for affordable housing. And so before we can take that next step, we need to have this amendment to the ordinance or to the code.
This is really a great, so RCW changed, Washington State changed their RCW to allow for the surplus of property for affordable housing. Our next step is we need to update our Thurston County Code in accordance with RCW to then allow for those actions to take place. So that first step is change the ordinance. To change the ordinance, you need to have a public hearing. So that's what this is.
But we can surplus property. What's?
Not necessarily for affordable housing.
So this would be surplusing it for a specific purpose instead of surplusing it to anybody in general? I think what it is, correct me if I'm wrong, because we did this a lot, is it allows you to surplus it at less than, than.
That's right.
For an appraised rate. Stating that there's a public benefit, so wouldn't be a gift to public. You could give it for a dollar, you could give it for what you paid for, you could give it a 10% discount, whatever. But you can't do any of that without this allowance. And we don't have to do it, we would do it, we would consider it on a case-by-case basis.
That's right.
And every item that you would consider would come before you as a board for action. So this is just setting the legal framework so that you can consider that, doesn't say that you have to consider.
Understood. And this is what law is doing to get the Mullen Road property to Lacey and we're giving it to, we're not giving it to them. We are selling it to them at what we paid for it rather than the appraised rate. Yeah, otherwise you have to do the yellow book and.
And you heard Rick preview that after this public hearing, depending upon if the board approves the update to the code, the next step will be the Homes First Organization has asked for two properties that they have been using for the past 20 years or so to use this process. So gotta take the steps to get there, but this is that next step. So if you do hear from Trudy Suko at Homes First, know that this is part of that.
Yeah, understood. Anything else?
Just great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for marching this one up the hill.
Yeah, good job.
Chair, this was an item that Commissioner Klaus requested to move.
Yeah, thanks, Amy. I was just walking in and getting off the video call when we were talking about that. So I'm happy to say a few words unless it was discussed. If I missed any.
Never, we didn't miss any.
Which one are we talking about?
Just the moving the items off consent.
Which items?
Well, as the County Manager said, there were a number of items I wanted to move off. But the point of sending that email was to not blindside staff. So I'm hoping that my desire to move things off consent doesn't shock staff. Because I do acknowledge that it takes additional staff time to have things on department item on that list rather than consent. But my understanding of the purpose of the consent agenda is to streamline routine decisions that we're going to make as a board. And there are a number of items that I think highlight the really important work that our staff is doing for the county. And there are also items that I think warrant a bit more robust discussion that we could kind of have at the business meetings because that's what a lot of the community members are watching. And so, yeah, that was kind of the reason for wanting to move, start moving more items off consent just in a broader sense. But for today's meeting, items 3 and 4 were items that I wanted to move off consent just at first glance of the agenda. But I was gonna wait until we heard each item from staff formally request each item to come off consent. But there were a handful of items on this one. And I can get to them as we go through the agenda or I can name them now, whatever the board prefers.
Like when we get to the end or, I mean, it doesn't really matter how.
Okay.
I'd rather do them as we get to them or.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
My preference, so items.
If you just want to say Item 4, you'd like to move, when they're done presenting, we just say this one you'd like to move to consent.
Yeah, that'd be perfect. Yeah, so 3 and 4 were the first ones.
I just want to point out that Item 4 is simply to set a public hearing. It's not, so you wouldn't be discussing the item. You would be, if you put that into a business meeting, you wouldn't be discussing that item. You would be discussing having a public hearing on that item.
Thank you, I understand that.
Okay, so I have 3 regarding, just to make sure I got that one. That would be you'd like to move up.
So 3.
Okay, so 3 and 4 will be off consent. And let's go to Item 5. Sole Source Purchase for TCSO Motorola. Motorola, that's hard to say this morning. Motorola radios.
Fleet Services is requesting approval to enter into a sole source contract with Motorola for 18 mobile and 18 portable radios. The purchase was incorporated into change request B1018 for the 24/25 biennium to add positions to the Thurston County Sheriff's Office. This equipment is intended to provide the equipment for 18 additional deputies being phased in in 2025. The reason for the sole source request is that the county is using the pricing that was negotiated by T-Sern as part of the larger implementation of this project, which is a better price than what we can get through NASPO. However, that contract did not allow for piggybacking, so we're using it as a sole source instead. This purchase has been reviewed by the Internal Auditor, Risk and Prosecuting Attorney's Office. And I'm available to answer any questions regarding this purchase.
Questions on sole source radios?
And the funding comes from?
Public Safety Services.
Okay, sounds like we're good there. Item 6. Thanks Bruce.
Okay.
Memorandum of Agreement with Thurston Conservation District. If you want to cover this one?
Sure. And this is in addition to the resolution that the board passed in December of last year raising rates for the Thurston Conservation District. The MOA is, has just been in place to accompany the resolution for the last several years. And so this is just renewing, renewing the MOA.
Yeah, this is procedurally, they adopt it, once the board took action on the rates, send us their document and then it's for the board's consideration for adoption and then it'll be considered codified.
So this is just about sort of affecting the rates and charges system that we already, which we already voted on?
Correct, yeah.
Any questions on Item 6? Item 7 is updated Thurston County Commute Trip Reduction Local Plan.
Come on Rebecca.
Good morning. Rebecca Harvey, Climate Mitigation Senior Program Manager. This is the required four-year update to the Thurston County Commute Trip Reduction or CTR Plan, which has been a standard action since the county adopted its CTR ordinance in 1999. Thurston Regional Planning Council implements the CTR program on behalf of the county and other affected jurisdictions in the county and updated the plan in coordination with county staff. I did send an email brief on March 18th with more detail and I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions? On this one?
Well, I guess I, the question I have is, would this be something we might want to have off the consent agenda to highlight, you know, what those were, you know, to highlight to the community what it is? Did we already do that? Did we already have a meeting where the community is going to know the new four-year targets and strategies or we're just approving?
Thurston County has not had a meeting, but TRPC has been doing stakeholder outreach with all of the workplaces that are affected.
I've heard, I've seen this and I've been a part of this and that, but I just don't know if, I guess I'm asking the rest of my seatmates if there's some benefit here on maybe just highlighting that, you know, we're not just approving something and saying this is being approved, but instead we're saying this is being approved and here's why. Because it has these great new things in it for, you know, and then it gives an opportunity for our community who might not participate in TRPC to actually know what it is that's coming, that's new, that we're setting targets for.
I agree with that actually. Because, I mean, it's not, it's not a procedural piece, there's some substantive changes to the.
You have new targets to hit as a team.
That the community might have interest in.
I want everyone to know about it, yeah. So just move that off consent?
Otherwise, any questions? Got an email brief if we need it? Thank you Rebecca.
And I'm happy to just pull some things out and say it.
Yeah, you know, Commissioners, there's a way to, if we want them as department items for a separate vote, obviously you all know how to do that, but I've also seen where they are in consent and you want a staff presentation to make comment, but they stay on consent. Just trying to understand what the goal is here. Is it the goal to have a separate vote or just to draw a highlight to the community like, hey, there's something great happening here and there's a way for staff to come up and then Commissioners, I've seen that take place too.
So I'm curious about that because, yeah, I mean typically it's the, it's, the consent is just done in a block with no discussion, no information presented. And that's why it's like, you know, approving the vouchers or approving the, you know, renewals of contracts, things like that. It doesn't need your staff presentation. So it's really hasn't been about anyone wanting a separate vote.
Right.
It's been about just having what you said, like highlighting for the community, getting a little bit of context for what we're doing and what the item involves.
So the way.
So how would we do that in your?
Yeah, the way I've seen it done is when you get to consent, you say Commissioners, are there any items that you would like to pull or you'd like more information on? And the Commissioners say, you know, I'd like to hear from staff briefly on item number 7, but you're not taking it off consent. So then you go through and say, great, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent. And you get the motion the second, before you take the vote, then you say, great, let's go through and maybe you have 2, you have 3. Then you just call staff up, they come up, they give a quick overview. You can ask a couple of questions or highlight what you want to highlight. But it stays on consent so that then after, it's kind of, that's the discussion period of the motion. Once all those items are done, then you can say, great, let's go ahead and call for the vote and it's still approved as a block as a way to keep the expedited form of the agenda, but then also to still have opportunity for items to be heard. Obviously, if there's like a handful of items, then we need to talk philosophically, maybe the direction we received at the end of 24 to move as much as we can on the consent, we want, this board wants to change that, which is absolutely appropriate. And we can load things up more for department items. There's flexibility there.
Commissioner Klaus?
I was wondering, because I did see the email that I got back from you, I appreciate your response so quickly. I don't recall, and I might just be forgetting, but I don't recall like official staff direction to move as much as we can to consent. Do we happen to have meeting minutes that reflect that? Or could someone point me to the specific meeting that we discussed making that change?
We'd have to go back, it wasn't like an official vote. There were several meetings where Commissioners were saying, can this be moved to consent calendar? Can clerk jump in here, as you remember as well? Several meetings where can this be moved to consent calendar? Yes, yes. So after about three meetings like that, there was a request from Commissioners, can we look to see as much, as much as we can? But it wasn't like a formal vote that the Commissioners took. You were part of those conversations, I think, for the most part.
The last quarter of last year, there were several meetings where we shifted a bunch of just mundane, everyday items over and there was more that we shifted over and it just made sense because a lot of this is not necessarily substantive.
And I think part of the conversation was since the Commissioners were reviewing all the items already twice and going in detail like we do today, that's where former Commissioner Edwards said, well, I feel comfortable doing this because we already have two reviews and there's a lot of comments. And he would actually, you remember probably him saying it from the dais. Just want the public to know that we've reviewed this in a lot of detail and they can go back to the meetings so that no one got the impression that any, that there was a, I think we're moving.
Slipping dais.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and I think, I do think that maybe, and I have not conferred with Commissioner Klaus on this at all, but you know, I think that I would agree that, yes, we should keep as much as we can on the consent agenda. There is a reason why, you know, we're saying that there's a bunch of items that we already are talking about and we don't need to review them again. But, you know, if there's two or three or four, I really like this idea of, I think the point that I'm bringing up is that there are some really cool things that people are working really hard on and not everyone watches the agenda setting and then the public meeting. You know, and it's kind of like, where do we want to emphasize this? And, you know, can we streamline it down to just the summary, but to say, this is why, you know, this is what we're about to approve on the consent agenda and this is what's cool about it so that the whole world knows. And then, I mean, I think that's what we need to do.
Yeah, what we don't need is Bruce coming up here four times.
Right.
Giving the same thing and then it'd just be a dog and pony show where we're just going through the motions every time. And by the time it gets onto a business meeting, we should know where we're at. They should know what we're going to pass and what we would have issues with. And at that point, it should be fully baked and we should not be at our final meeting having a big debate about something because we should have been doing the work in the meantime.
Yeah, I think with the, the direction the board has given to take the second agenda review and only, I'm saying this for the directors that are sitting here, because it is a significant amount of time for them to attend three separate meetings and presenting the same thing three times. But I understand the need for us to communicate to the public, who may be, Commissioner Klaus, your point, they're watching the business meeting. So I'd like the, the direction the board gave to make the second agenda review only reviewing items that Commissioner had questions as a follow-up, because that'll streamline down the agenda. And we're about to send an email out. We probably would have already gotten out minus spring break, so we'll get that out in the next week or so. That'll be a direction to the directors to know, only if the Commissioners have questions that came up at the first meeting or questions that were asked in between meetings, should they be here to present so that they don't have to waste their time. But then if we did this approach, and I can work it out with the clerk so that we can come up with a process for you Chair on pulling a few items that are noteworthy, but may not be, we may not have the need for department item. We can do a quick presentation approach and we can draw out the fact of, hey Rebecca, it's really great that there's new targets. Can you go over those briefly? Yes, these targets are dit, 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 and they can give information and it can remain on consent. And obviously the board has the prerogative to pull any items of department items and staff will be ready to report out fully on those items as well. So I think we have some flexibility.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's an art, not a science and it, I guess my question about, I'm, I'm fine to try what kind of manager suggests. I don't know that it saves that much time honestly, because all we're saving is just me saying, okay, there are motion, you know, fall vote, you know. So like, does a minute save per item? Staff, the main thing is that staff has to be here ready to give that information. And that's going to be true whether they do it through questions at consent or department item. So I don't know that it saves all that much time to do it one versus the other, but I'm certainly willing to try it. Because what, I think what you're saying is there's really two pieces of a, something not being on consent. There's, the main reason not to be on consent is because we're not in agreement and there's going to be a split vote, you know. And that, that's got to be a department item so that we vote and it's, maybe it's 4 to 1, maybe it's 3 to 2. Maybe it fails because somebody changed their mind, let's happen. But you're saying that where it's really not about that, it's just about wanting to give some information. This is kind of recognizing that there's two pieces to that.
Right.
And so I'm willing to give that a try, just to see if we like it, understanding that we might want to flop it back to the, you know.
Sure.
It may not seem to save any time.
And the other aspect is if there are items that the Commissioners would like to be reported out on, I could take the County Manager Comments section and based on the items, I could give a quick overview or have staff give a quick overview on things that are noteworthy in the agenda, things that we want to point out. Right now, the County Manager Comments section is more like, is there any follow-up from last meeting that you wanted to report out on? And when there's none, most of the time there is none, I say nothing to report, but we could take that. I think we have a couple of options. If the Commission's goal is, let's start to communicate in business meetings, some of the great things that are embedded in these items so that the public understands all the work that's taking place. I think with the Assistant County Managers and our great department heads, we can come up with a way that does that in an efficient manner once we know what your priorities are after the first agenda setting. So we have a couple of ways to get there.
Maybe we can finish this like at-work session to kind of talk through the last little bit of it. But I would agree that, you know, what we're trying to do is not waste staff time and, and also highlight what's really important and what's really great at those public, at those larger meetings, the business meetings. Okay.
And I'm just, and I'm not, and for me, I mean, not that I don't want to pat stuff on the back, totally do. But to me, it's like, there's substantive, like the climate one's perfect, like the community actually needs to know that. Like, we're trying to get them to do stuff and like, if we just embed it through a consent item and they don't know what we're asking them to do, like that doesn't really serve the purpose of the, of the work that we're doing.
It's also a reminder though for us that we just agreed to those goals, that TRPC is going to, that we have to be thinking about those goals in our setting.
I don't think, there's nothing that we do.
I don't think, there's nothing that we do in secret. And you know, like there are a lot of different ways that we can get information out there. And if you, like if you follow Jolt, they report every conversation that we have. And so, you know, another method is to, you know, ask, you know, Rebecca to give us 10 minutes of explanation on this. And then we send, you know, you ping whatever media outlets are out there and they write articles on these things and people see them en masse.
The other opportunity we have as we are getting closer, which is very exciting, to hiring our county chief communications manager is that every meeting, there's a social media blast on things the commissioners want to get out, kind of like an agenda and preview, a quick little video that says, here are some great things that we're working on. If we did that in advance of the agenda, we could also have that ready for our public meeting. And so it's being put on social media, of course, has to be short and sharp. But then we can also play it as part of our meeting. So I think we have some options, knowing what the board wants to consider. And we can bring that back to a work session and kind of hash that through chair, if that's okay with you.
Okay, so keep flagging items for either pulling out consent or having additional information. We'll figure that out later. Commissioner Claus?
Thank you. I realized I missed one item. It was the Motorola radios. So I wanted to pull that one too.
So two confirmed, three, four and five, or just four and five?
Do you want to pull it for a vote or do you want to highlight?
For a vote or?
Well, I mean, until we get the process ironed out, I think as far as the items on the 15th, we should pull them and put them on department items until we figure out what other mechanism we're going to use.
Yeah, we'll just count that a bucket and that goes in the bucket.
What are, are you asking the staff come and highlight the significance of this issue? Is that something you want more staff effort put into, some type of presentation on? Or do you just want to take a vote on it?
Hmm.
Because this is gonna-
I think just the same information that we've heard. I don't think we need a full presentation or anything from staff. But by putting it on department items inherently, it's going to have a separate vote. But I think just until we get the process ironed out-
So you want Darren to come in, give the same thing that he gave today?
Yes.
Bruce.
We will pay Bruce.
Bruce, my bad.
We're correcting that. That's right. Oh, Darren, oh yeah.
Bruce.
Okay, and let's go on to item eight, resolution for 2025 Take Your Child to Work Day. Maria Ponte, come on in.
Good morning, commissioners. Maria Ponte, HR Director. I'm here today to present a resolution on Take Your Child to Work Day. It's current, we are participating on this national event on April 24th. And the intent of this resolution is to encourage our employees to participate by allowing them to do so on county time. Previously, they would have to take leave.
Previously, like last time we did it?
I think we participated on a very low level last year. And then during the pandemic, we weren't able to.
Yeah, pre-pandemic.
Yeah.
So does a resolution just is going to be for this year?
No, it'll go on-
Oh, so, so this is more or less going to give us the option to make it a normal thing? And it should be that people can participate without, yeah, having to, okay, awesome. Okay.
Well, I was just gonna say, I know there's been work being done on it. I don't know exactly where things stand. Is there any updates you could give about? Are you part of any of that?
Um, I'm happy to provide an update on that one. There is a planning committee for Take Your Child to Work Day that Kim Burnett from Public Works is leading. And so far what the day sort of looks like is a morning here at the atrium where families will come up to the commissioner's office first to check in, get their badge and their picture. They will tour around upstairs. They will come down to the auditor's office to do a mock election for Thurston County's official ice cream flavor, which will then be-
Rank choice voting?
Rank choice voting. Awesome, yeah.
Hey, will come into the board room and join us for a mock board meeting and a proclamation for the ice cream flavor. And we will take a photo with everyone like we do for the board. And then we will have a kind of split area upstairs and downstairs for folks to visit tables of different departments who will have activities and age-appropriate engagement activities. There will be a lunch break followed by a tour at the courthouse with a mock trial, the Goldilocks mock trial. If you're familiar with that, it's pretty fun and engaging for kids. And then we'll have-
Breaking and entering. She's on trial.
Is that what it is?
I don't know, I'm just guessing. She's a criminal. I mean, we all know that from childhood.
Alleged.
Alleged.
And there will be a touch the truck sort of event outside. I think the sheriff's office will be represented there, Public Works. We'll have fire trucks, ambulance, that sort of thing, so.
Cassidy Defense.
How old do the kids have to be? Can I bring my 21-year-old so I can participate?
Five to 18 at the atrium.
All right.
I just want to give a special thanks for the team that's come together. Folks like Linda Zeman and others have been working very hard on this and lots of ideas. And you know, what I've found is Bring Your Child to Work Day is not only great for staff morale because they get to show off to their children all the things that they do, but it's also great as a retention tool and a recruitment tool. As a lot of folks, as they don't know what government does and they'll get to experience all the things that, something like Thurston County with all our elected offices. So kudos to the team for putting this on.
And I, I want to say that, so a real, I have a real life example of how this thing works that, you know, previous work at DSHS, I brought my kids with me to these days. And then there was an opportunity in college for one of my kids to be an intern. And the person doing that remembered Cooper from the day that he went on and he was hired. And so, and Cooper has worked two summers at DSHS as an intern. So this is an incredible, good job. And I think this is real important for us, our kids to understand what we're doing and for them to be thinking about these as careers in the future. So, good job.
Glad we were able to bring this back. Okay, thank you. Then let's go on to item nine, amendment number three to Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract.
Good morning, Chair.
Hi, Public Health and Social Services Director. My jazz voice is on this morning. I'm seeking your approval on just this simple routine amendment three to the Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract. Amendment three provides an additional $255,494. It also adds statements of work to the Public Health Infrastructure Grant portion and the local health jurisdiction opioid campaign proviso. So these are just other portions where they're updating. Just as a side note, this amendment came before the March 24th, all the federal changes and things. So that does not reflect this. Future amendments will reflect those different changes that they're making at this date.
Questions on item nine? Nope, thank you. Okay, item 10, professional service contract with Lewis County for Nurse Family Partnership Services.
All right, thank you. We're seeking approval on, this is just a routine annual professional services contract with Lewis County for the purchase of their nurse family partnership services between January 1 and December 31 of 2025. Thurston County NFP has been part of this regional partnership with both Lewis and Mason Counties since 2018. So this is routine. The contract is specifically before our partnership with Lewis County to provide those NFP services. It includes one full-time community health nurse, a .25 community health nurse supervisor and a .20 data support staff and provides services to 25 families in Lewis County. And I have Gretchen Toller here in case we have any questions as well too.
Gretchen's forgot, I had her, Jen, I mean Gretchen, sorry. Awesome job.
Oh, great. This is great.
This is awesome. I had the opportunity to go on a ride along with the NFP program staff and it was awesome. It was definitely eye-opening. It's great work. I did have this one selected to take off consent, but you said it's a routine contract. So I'll go ahead and we can leave it on consent. But I did want to just say, since we're here, highlighting this work as much as we can is great because it's so vital to our community members. And you know, the nurses literally go out to where people are at if they're unhoused or if they're living in RVs, you know, in the middle of nowhere. Our nurses actually go out and sit with them and, you know, spend time with them, talk to them and see how they're doing, check on their kiddos and provide resources that they might need, including like gift cards sometimes to get food and stuff like that. So it's just an amazing program and I appreciate all the hard work that you put into it. So thank you.
And then I just want to mention too, I just want to give kudos to your comm staff or your communication staff because I did see something recently. I'm highlighting this program and I've been seeing some really great comms coming out. And I just want you to know that I'm seeing it and that, you know, people are doing good work on highlighting these programs because the community really does need to know that they exist in order for them to tap into it. And this is one of those that's so important. And so, good job.
Thank you.
This is great.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 11, Architect Engineering Services Contract Award for Grand Mount Wastewater Treatment Plant Phase One Improvement Project.
Good morning, commissioners. Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager with Public Works. This item is a request for the board to award a contract in the amount of $482,500 to Grain Osborne for design of Grand Mount Phase One Wastewater Treatment Plant improvements and to authorize the Public Works Director to execute the contract and any amendments not to exceed 10% of the contract amount. This project was identified in the ecology-approved Grand Mount General Sewer and Wastewater Facility Plan, which was finalized in 2024. And it is the first of several identified projects from that plan that are designed to incrementally expand service capacity at that facility. And with that, I would answer any questions the board may have.
Is this the tail end of our ARPA dollars? This is separate funding?
Separate from our funding.
From our, which fund?
This would be paid for with sewer rates, GFCs.
Okay. Is there Phase Two coming on this?
There is a Phase Two that was identified. It's not on the CFP as of yet because there is not identified funding for that and it is a ways out. This, this project specifically would upgrade the oxidation ditch out at the facility. If you've been to the facility, that is the concrete structure that the wastewater runs through. It would upgrade the UV disinfection system and upgrades, upgrade the solid, solids handling procedure out there. And it would allow us to very conservatively continue to serve the area probably until the mid 2030s, at which time we would need to be in process with Phase Two, which would be a second oxidation ditch.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Is that, I think there's a typo on the last part after 10%. It says 48,200. Is that-
10% of 48,200.
Oh, duh. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you guys. You got the next one or are you just done? Matt Unzleman is next.
You got this, you got this.
Public Works, next few items here, contract award for pavement milling machine rental, item 12.
All right, Matt Unzleman, Thurston County Engineer. Public Works is recommending the Board of County Commissioners award a contract for renting a pavement milling machine to PR Systems in the amount of $307,906 and also authorize the Director of Public Works to execute that contract. The contract includes renting the machine in the spring and fall, two months at a time, for three consecutive years. As you know, this machine is necessary. We were responsible for maintaining more than 1,000 miles of roadway. And this machine is really imperative to our operations to go ahead and maintain our pavement conditions.
I have a quick question. So this will approve this for the next three years, right?
Correct.
Okay. It's like, we've already approved this. Yeah, so, okay, cool.
You remember the call for sealed bids that came forward?
Yeah, okay, yeah. So it's kind of like, a lot of, you know, it seems like a lot of work for us just to move a contract forward, but yeah.
And this is something we're researching. Currently Thurston County requires any request for proposals to come to the commissioners before they're even released. I've never seen that before. Normally I've seen requests for proposals go out, then bids come, then come to the commissioners once they're ready for a decision. So we're researching the mechanics of that to see if we can streamline it because it is a lot of touch points, which creates-
I think that's a great idea.
It's 307,000. That's a new perspective from District Two Commissioner.
Yeah, well, there I am, a new-
Discussions about that in the past.
Yeah.
Is it 307,000 for three years?
Total over three years.
We might want to just add that in there, just so it's, just say 307,000 for three years. That way folks kind of understand the true cost.
Through 2027 or something like that.
Sounds more expensive than it actually is.
For the record, this new commissioner thinks that our staff can absolutely put an RFP out and do the work that they need to do in order to bring back a recommendation based on the amount. So I have all the faith in our staff to do this and feel that we shouldn't have to ask or revisit it so many times, so.
Item 13, contract award for Cooper Road Southwest at Mock Shahelis Creek Culvert Replacement Project.
Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners award a contract for the Cooper Road Southwest at Mock Shahelis Creek Culvert Replacement Project to Brumfield Construction in the amount of $425,773. We received six bids for this project in response to a call for sealed bids. The project itself includes installing a prefabricated steel bridge to replace a temporary bridge that was installed in 2022 after two four-foot culverts washed out during a flooding event. FEMA funding will be used to fund this project. So we'll be, FEMA will be funding 90% of the project costs and the remaining 10% will come from refunding. This project will also open an additional 1.8 miles of fish habitat upstream.
Questions on item 13? Let's go. Let's go to 14, license and indemnity agreement for a private water line.
This one should sound familiar. Summit Lake Road is unique in that there's small properties on the lake side of the road and on the uphill side of the road. Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners execute a license and indemnity agreement with a property owner on Summit Lake Shore Road. The property owner has a residence on the uphill side of Summit Lake Shore Road. They have an easement from the owner on the downhill side of the Summit Lake Shore to pump water from the lake to their uphill property. To do this, they obviously must cross through the right of way. So an indemnity agreement is necessary for, to facilitate the installation of their water line across the county right of way.
Is this a new connection?
Yeah. Or this is a retrofit.
Yeah, because isn't there some kind of, you know, I don't want to use the word moratorium because I don't think it's that strong, but there's some sort of-
It's an existing line that they're doing work on. That's the retrofit. Yes, to your point, the new connections are conversations being had.
Yeah.
With the ecology and squats.
Right.
And this is not one of those.
Okay, any questions on, if you've been out to Summit Lake, it's a unique situation in the county. Okay, let's go to the 15, orders against cooperative contracts estimated to exceed $50,000.
This one's for me, so I'm going to stop and say Karen Wees, Public Works Director, because when I sat down, I did not do some, I apologize for that.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, so this, this is a request for board authorization for purchasing in alignment with our county procurement policy. In delivery of our services, specifically road operations and traffic, we routinely purchase materials, supplies and services. Examples of these are things like rock, pipe, salt and paint. For the most efficient and cost-effective approach to purchasing these items, we use cooperative purchasing agreements, which I think you're familiar with, but basically utilizing bid processes and contracts awarded by other public agencies. This typically through the Department of Enterprise Services, although we do sometimes piggyback off other jurisdictions' opportunities. Our procurement policy requires board approval to purchase these reoccurring supplies and services under cooperative purchasing if they exceed $50,000. So we have compiled a list of those services and supplies that we are estimating that over the court- that over the course of the year, under, under the cooperative purchasing, will exceed that fifty thousand dollar threshold. And these are all going, these are all routinely paid for through existing budget authority and the various funds. Questions? Exciting. Allows us to get our work done.
Yeah.
So, I know you, you went quickly there and my mind was sort of hung up on something, but this says where the annual cost is expected to exceed fifty thousand.
Correct.
And it goes, is there, there's no upper limit to that or?
Correct, there's not an upper limit to that. No, but we, yeah.
Now you're doing it if it's less than fifty and you're going to, and this would change that to where it would.
This is just, our procurement policy requires us if things, if our supplies and services for these types of materials are expected to exceed fifty thousand dollars and we do those purchases under cooperative purchasing agreement that the, we now, this is a blanket approval for us to purchase those. They're still within our existing budget authority, right? We're still limited by our budget authority and the overall procurement policy. And they may not, and not in all instances will they exceed fifty thousand dollars. They're just our estimates for the year so that we can make sure when we are purchasing these items that we are in alignment with our procurement policy.
So I guess I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this clearly. So in order to meet the procurement policy, you've created a list of all of the normal, everyday things that our office or Public Works will need to purchase over the next year.
Correct.
And some of them exceed fifty thousand dollars and some of them don't, right? And then, and, and then we approve it and then it just gives you the right of way to go ahead and get these things done without needing to bring it to us anymore.
Correct. If, if some of these things, you'll see costs below fifty thousand dollars, but based on our need could exceed that fifty thousand dollar threshold. So those are the items that we've put on the list. We've, we've looked at our, at our annual expenditures for the year and what our needs are anticipated to be. And so we've said these items potentially would be purchased and exceed that fifty thousand dollar threshold.
So a great example of being proactive and transparent. Good job.
Good job. This is great.
Anything else on that item? Okay, let's go to item sixteen. Contract with North Thurston School District or School Resource Officer. You got a call on him? Should we introduce himself?
Sheriff Sanders and Under Sheriff Mancias, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Uh, so this is a request to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the contract with North Thurston School District. They provide us ninety-five thousand dollars a year for a school resource officer. That school resource officer covers Nisqually Middle School and I believe six or seven elementary schools that feed into that system. So we have a great partnership with North Thurston and even though Nisqually Middle School has been annexed by Lacey Police Department, they've requested to stick it out with us, so.
Current contract's expiring, so this would be for the next three years.
Okay, questions on item sixteen?
Well, you already answered one. One of mine was going to be why is Lacey not doing this? And then this is one SRO for six elementary schools and one middle school. How much time is that officer able to spend at each school?
Uh, well, I would say Nisqually Middle School is probably a full-time job. And then they're basically there on an as-needed basis with the elementary schools. There's not a lot of crime to enforce at the elementary schools, so a lot of what they're doing there is going there for events, building relationships with the kids so that they understand and know who they are when they come up through the system, through the middle school. But at the middle school, they, I would venture to guess that Deputy Rose spends about ninety percent of his time at, at the middle school, so.
I had an interesting conversation, back when we were, we were going, the state passed some laws to like look at SROs and study them and I'm still not sure where that research, you know, they're supposed to be reports and.
Yeah.
So I don't really know, I haven't heard of that in the last couple of years. But anyway, back when we were discussing all that, I was calling all the superintendents and I called every superintendent to talk to them about their SROs and, you know, why they liked them or what they did was positive, you know, what they're, you know, what they were thinking about it. And I think it was Rochester where they were basically like, the best part of the SRO is like, is to like manage parents. Angry parents were coming, you know, and then the SRO would be just an excellent thing to just kind of like set the, you know, just to keep the temperature down of the conversation and really advance the, what could have escalated into something unnecessary. I thought that was, that was a weird thing I would have never thought of is like what the value of the, of the, of the.
Likely very different at each school, each community, the role that they play and that's kind of why they're so cool.
Yeah, and a lot of what they deal with obviously is like, an eleven-year-old by statute can't commit a crime. They're not old enough, they don't have the, I mean, you could, if it's serious enough, you could go down that road. But traditionally what they're dealing with a lot is like, an eleven-year-old stabbed another eleven-year-old with a pencil. And then you have one parent who wants that kid to go to prison and you've got another, and so the SROs are constantly balancing a lot of that of like, well, you know, we don't, we don't send eleven-year-olds to prison kind of thing and, and trying to put them on like, working with the staff to get them on like improvement plans and things like that to deal with behavior, so.
Because they have like de-escalation training, like going back to the parent thing, like they have de-escalation training that like school staff doesn't, don't always have.
Correct, yeah, and I believe that the SRO basic is forty hours and then SRO advanced is another forty hours. So in the summertime, we send them to their trainings and whatnot.
Commissioner calls?
So you said that you called the superintendents a while back because of state policies that included like maybe reports on how SROs are doing. Do you know, um, like where that policy lies right now? Or like what requirements there are for SRO reporting and things like that?
Now, that, those, that piece of legislation would have been done before I took office, um, because I believe that would have been twenty twenty-one, I think was the timeframe for that, maybe even before that.
You said a study, not a policy. But what it was, was the, 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 so there was concern about any racial disparity and so the superintendents had to like, if they were going to utilize SROs, they have to sense, you know, collect some statistics and send it to one of the state agencies that would kind of be able to look at it, holistically see if there were things going on differently in different parts of the state. And so as we were, as Commissioners approving the contracts, like I was curious about all of this because I'd seen all that, all that information. And so it was good those phone calls I had because in at least a couple of cases, they didn't know that that law had changed, like the, I'm just going to pick on Rochester, I don't remember if it was Rochester, but like the Rochester superintendent didn't know that like, that they needed to collect this data and send it. I mean, no one from the state called them and, you know, it was like, there was just a gap. It was one of those things that happens around here every now and then where state, like, state law changes and no one actually knows it did. And so it was actually, so that's why, you know, and then like, um, about a year and a half later, I followed up to see like, well, what did that data show? What did it do? And it turned out then it was post-COVID and everything was kind of paused because the funding had been like pulled for the, for the follow-up by the state. So I don't even know if the state refunded the, the follow-up studies related to this. It was kind of in limbo the last time I checked on it a couple of years ago. But that was kind of what was, how it was structured. And the super, and so it really wasn't, we didn't have to do anything, you guys didn't have to do anything. I mean, we're providing service, right? The school districts are making a policy decision, they want this resource. Then they have to, to have that resource by state law, they have to make sure that they're not doing things that are racially just, have racial disparities connected to them. And, and that's, and the state was going to kind of try to monitor that or, or, you know, look over that through this data collection.
The, the how the services delivered, the relationship between the agency and the school district, that's all negotiated by the school board and the sheriff's department. So, you, you know, whether it's, whether, whether you want to look at, you know, what are the hours spent by deputy so-and-so or officer so-and-so? That might not even be part of the contract. It could be, you know, like there's some that are just an availability thing. There's some that are, we want, you know, a teacher, you know, we want you to teach a class on, uh, you know, cyberbullying. Like it looks different for each school and that's something that's negotiated between the agency and the school district. And the school district ultimately is the one saying, yes, we want this.
Yeah, and we kind of let our, our SROs, they're all very different in how they go about doing their things. We have some that are super involved and want to be, put stuff out on social media. We have others who like to do things more in private, pull teachers and, and parents in and have, like we have one who's really good about pulling teachers, parents and the kid in for after-hour conversations when they're misbehaving in class and stuff and trying to take corrective action. Um, but you'll never see that person post a photo on social, you'll never see any of that kind of stuff, right? They like doing, so it's kind of interesting. We, we just kind of let them each be their own school resource officer and whatever works for each district because it is all different.
Do you have multiple SROs in your office that we're not talking about on the agenda today? How many SROs do you have?
We have three.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have partners with North Thurston, Rainier and Rochester.
Okay, thank you.
Do, uh, I don't know what my question is. Let me think about this. So are, are, do our SROs work closely with folks at, at the, each of the districts to look at restorative justice practices?
Well, the entire SRO program is kind of a restorative justice because we don't take kids to jail hardly ever. So just the fact that we don't take any kids to jail is kind of, the whole process is, is kind of that preventative nature because one way or another, cops end up at the schools. Crimes are being committed. There's, there's no way around that and we see that a lot with Olympia School District. Last year, the school year started off with two handguns and on school premises, but all they ended up getting were the district car in between shoplifting calls who doesn't have all the other SRO, de-escalation, all that other training. They don't get all that. So with our SRO program, the, the whole goal is to not put kids in jail. That is the last step. What they really try to do is work with parents, work with teachers, work with school staff to try and make kids successful. That is, that is the entire premise behind it. I believe if you look at the youth services jail roster, there's on average, I think about ten, ten kids in a county of three hundred thousand at any given point inside of our jail system. So, um, most of the crimes that you're going to see committed at a school, unless you get to the extreme end of bomb threats, bringing guns to school, drug dealing, those kinds of things, everything else is going to get sent to a juvenile prosecutor. And I would, I would argue on Prosecutor Toonheim's behalf that most of what they're trying to do with juveniles is restorative.
Oh, I just want to applaud you for adding all that extra training in and really working towards that, so.
Yeah, all of our school districts seem pretty happy with, with the school resource officers. They do not want to let go of those.
This is one of the items I wanted to have pulled from consent. And, um, I know like Olympia School District has had a lot of controversy around SROs and a lot of public input. Have we had any of that here at the county level? Has anyone come forward and said, hey, we have concerns about this?
Not to me.
Okay.
No, like I said, any, at one point when I was running for office, there was a conversation about Lacey annexed Nisqually, but Lacey didn't have the staffing to put a school resource officer in Nisqually Middle School. And there was a huge, like, North Thurston was like, we'll pay you guys, we want you to stay. So everything that we've gotten back from the districts, from parents, from citizens has been, keep the, keep the school resource officers.
I brought this issue forward early in my term because I had read a bunch of stuff about nothing related to the here, but how SROs have been used inappropriately in other parts of the country. So I kind of dug down the rabbit hole and that's why I had those phone calls with all the SRO to superintendents and Sheriff Snaz and I met a couple of times and everything. So I was sort of, and then the state passed the law that, hey, we're going to, we're going to study this and make sure there aren't, you know, those types of inappropriate. So I was kind of pulled back from concerns based on, and then hearing how they're used in Thurston County, it seems like they've been all positive from what I've been able to see.
I just want to, um, just bring this up that, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm totally fine if we move it off consent agenda, but just to bring up the fact that this is not a new, new or additional thing that's happening. It is just, uh, reapproving the same contract that's been in place for this whole time. And so that's for me, this is more of a, this is a business step and not a policy decision.
The school district is asking this for.
Yeah, so just, just a reminder, just to make sure everyone knows that.
I, I, I really appreciate what your comments because that's my experience as well. You know, being, being an administrator that had SROs, you know, like it, it is frustrating when you see national narratives and national platforms applied in ways that don't fit to, in our community. And I, I really think it's important that the first time our schools and our kids aren't, aren't seeing a police officer in the schools when there's something bad happening. It's very important that they have that relationship established already. It's also, you know, really good for public safety when our officers know the layouts of the schools in case of, you know, something horrible happening. So that, you know, the, the secondary benefits of having them in there, knowing the halls and knowing the exits and knowing the doors is, is absolutely important for public safety.
Just to capitalize on that, I think it was last year, we took a, um, an active shooter threat at Nisqually Middle School. Someone called and said they were walking into the school in an AR-15 and they were going to kill everybody. And Deputy Rose was waiting in the foyer. So he's online, but he's already on the radio saying, I'm, I'm here, I'm ready for him. And that's the kind of response we want for an active shooter in our county, is that someone with armed resistance is already waiting to meet you there and that you're not just going to be able to walk into our school and cause harm. The other thing I will say too is that a, a good SRO can do very good work, a bad SRO can do real harm. So another thing that we do is, um, I believe with all of our school districts, they actually sit on the panel when we have people test for school resource officer, they're part of that, that selection process. So it's not something where we just pick an SRO and stick them in the school and say, hey, here's what you got. Usually there's some sort of selection process where the school district is also part of that so they can see the candidates, get an idea. But that's also why we don't, you know, I wouldn't take my graveyard cop who just wants to go out and find felony murder suspects and stick them in the school because that's not the kind of work that they're going to be successful in. That's not, it, it is more of a social work type deal where a lot of it is just solving problems at the lowest level, you know? Whereas we're not going to go put our, our graveyard guy who's like, I want to go find every stolen car and every, every murder suspect. That's not what the schools are. So picking the right person is just as important as having, having a program in the first place.
No disrespect to those graveyard officers.
No disrespect to them. Hey, I, as a, as a deputy, like I had no interest in working in the schools. I wanted to go, you know, do all the other stuff and chase people down and track with dogs and stuff, so finding the right person's important.
All right, let's go to item, another sheriff item is number seventeen. Contract with Department Corrections for Thurston Current County Narcotics Task Force.
So this is also, I believe, an extension of a contract. It provides for two full-time DOC employees to participate in the narcotics task force operations. And it's just the reimbursement up to ten thousand dollars a year for their overtime. The money is paid out of the Drug Seizure Fund. So no general fund is, is impacted by this. And really a big strategy for this is that there are things that DOC officers cannot do and there are things that Narcotics Task Force officers cannot do, but together they get to make a task force and they get to leverage each other's authority. So, um, it doesn't come without any surprise, a lot of our major drug dealers are ex-prison. If they're on DOC, they're either active monitoring or they've, they've been removed. But either way, having DOC embedded has been a huge, huge help for, for manpower and the ability to, to capture some of these dealers, so.
Questions on item seventeen?
As a former CCO, I understand the benefits and I think it's very smart and very wise to build a team like that, so, yes.
Um, this was another one I wanted pulled off consent and eighteen and nineteen as well, just as a heads up.
Okay, let's go to eighteen, Interlokal Cooperation for SWAT Deployment.
Can I ask, can I go back?
Yeah.
I'm just going to ask a quick question about this. Um, so the, we reimburse DOC for overtime costs for up to ten thousand. Is there any reason why, why it has to be overtime?
Uh, staffing, probably, I mean, yeah, ten thousand dollars, we, we want to keep the cost low, so we do it on an overtime basis. So for instance, uh, the Narcotics Task Force is investigating a high-profile dealer and the person who they're investigating happens to be active DOC, they're on active supervision. There can be things that DOC, once they have enough evidence, can violate that person on. We can take them into custody, for instance, and then search their house once they're already in custody, we get the search warrant for their residence. So that's a good example of, we don't necessarily need DOC to sit in our office forty hours a week and, and talk with us about stuff, but that's a good opportunity, hey, um, on Saturday, we're all going to meet at the station and spend four hours to go over this case and go execute a search warrant. So it's really on just more of an as-needed basis as opposed to sticking someone full-time.
Right.
DOC doesn't have it set up where they're having their community corrections officers work overtime on weekends. And so that's where you're supplementing and getting their assistance to.
Okay, got it. That makes sense totally.
Okay, then we've got SWAT deployment, Lacey Fire District Three, Interlocal Cooperation Agreement.
So I'll talk about this one, uh, for the past twenty-something years, we've had medics on the SWAT team. It's usually been one medic. Originally it was Olympia that had someone on there probably for fifteen years and then Tom Water had someone on there for about ten years, a little over ten years. Last year, we went through a recruiting process to see how we could replace the Tom Water medic that was on the team. And there was a lot of interest from Olympia, Lacey and Tom Water that, hey, how do we put some more positions on, on the team as a tactical medic? In working with Medic One, Medic One got funding last year or approval for that to, to, to fund three positions. So we added or did a testing process at the end of last. So we added or did a testing process at the end of last year. And, uh, one Olympia, uh, medic was picked and two Lacey Fire District Three medics were picked through the testing process and participation. All the other entities were part of our original ILA with the SWAT team, City of Tom Water, City of Olympia, and Lacey Yelm. Uh, but Lacey Fire District Three was not part of that once they became a, a fire district. So this ILA basically is, uh, an ILA that, um, Lacey Fire District Three will join in with the process that we already have in place in the, the structures for the SWAT team, uh, to allow, uh, Medic One to, to supplement their funding for that. Sheriff's Office provides all the equipment for the, the medics, regardless of what, uh, agency they're coming from. But Medic One pays for, for their, their, uh, extra stuff.
Puts a paramedic in with the SWAT team.
Yes, well, it puts three. So we'll have one from Olympia and two from, uh, two from Lacey Fire District.
Great picks.
Yes, they, they do a great job. And their primary goal is to be there for our, uh, officers in the event of an emergency shootings. Uh, we've had officers on the, the team, uh, or one officer in the time that I've been part of it, uh, that was shot. The medic was able to, to tend to him right then and there and get them processed before they could go out. It also allows, instead of, uh, on our operations where we'd have to pull a medic unit out of service to sit there and wait for us uh, while we're on a call for six, twelve, who knows how long, they don't have to do that now. Our, our medics are there and they are, when we're ready to need more help than, you know, an additional on-duty medic unit would be called in to, to take over, I guess you could say. But they're right there for our members. And they've also been able to help the citizens that we're dealing with too, being, being a victim of some type of crime or the suspect. Once we get them into custody, they're able to provide some, some treatment for them.
Any other questions on item eighteen? Then we've got one more sheriff item, uh, single-source purchase grappler system.
Uh, this was the purchase up to twenty thousand, two hundred dollars. And I believe it was like two grapplers and more nets, um, is what we got. It's through the JAG grant, so we got a federal grant, um, that was approved. And so this is just coming back again, I think for like the fourth time now for our single-source purchase for the two grapplers.
How the grappler's been doing?
Really good.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're at five captors now, um, with the grapplers. So they have been extremely effective. Um, again, these are, I think in all but one of them, we had no vehicle damage. So, um, how about, I mean, in one of them, we stopped, uh, there's a lady who made some bomb threats and had a child in the backseat of the car. And we were able to grapple that one and no pit maneuver, nothing like that. Child, okay, take him into custody. And I think the car had like, uh, a little tiny dent in the bumper from, from the result of it. So the grappler was.
Our car or their car?
Their car. Yeah. And they're, they're over-engineered, so they're designed by a carpenter. So everything is like twelve-gauge steel. Um, and so we've had, we've had cars get rammed with them, um, and whatnot. And they still work, still, still just fine. Just got some scuffs on the paint. So. Yeah.
See if Bruce was here. He'd be happy to hear that.
Yeah, oh, yes, he would. Yeah. So we did have the, the patrol vehicle that got hit by DUI. That grappler did not survive. Uh, but it was, uh, covered, the driver had insurance. So insurance is gonna replace a grappler system force, which is not cheating. Um, but then we got to throw that grappler into the spare parts. So anytime, there is a one weak link on the entire system and it's the gas shocks. So once it folds past a certain point, it flips open and it's got these little gas shocks between its elbow. That's the only weak point in the system. Um, so now we've got a little, little spare parts bin of gas shocks that we slap back on there.
We should close.
I saw the video where that car like flipped when it got grappled. It like flipped and went off the side of the road.
On I-5?
I don't know if it was on I-5, but you said most of them had no vehicle damage. So I'm assuming this was like one that had probably some vehicle damage.
Or the first one? Yeah, that was the first deployment we had. And, uh, it was at ninety-two miles an hour, um, in a stolen car. And the tether actually snapped because there was so much tension between the car speeding and the patrol car slowing and it yanked the car. But it pretty much looked just like a pit maneuver. Um, and it spun around and hit a tree and
Yeah.
he was healthy enough to get out and run. So, um, yeah.
One additional thing that, matter of fact, today, uh, we've gotten with the company Stock Enterprises and set up a, a, uh, training course. So we hosted it, a couple of other agencies attended, and, uh, several, uh, maintenance people from Bruce's crew are getting certified to install those. So now when we order them and, and have them installed, we don't have to pay the two thousand dollars a car install fee that they do. So we can do it all in-house now. And they're getting certified for that today.
So, yeah, they're all here installing a few more grapplers and, um, our county shops will be able to install them from here on out.
Are we getting called by other agencies to come and grapple?
Yes.
Are there any thoughts about charging?
Nope.
But why? I mean, I like, if they're not participating and, and coming up with safe ways to stop fleeing subjects, why, why would we not maybe have a conversation about the use of our resources to?
I think in the, in the spirit of mutual aid, we have opted to.
Mutual aid's gotta be reciprocal though.
It has been though.
Can't be a one-way street.
It has been. So I mean, yeah, you're, you're right. So State Patrol's a good one, right? State Patrol gets behind a car speeding and they immediately call for it. They're like, does county have a grappler? Right? And we send one every time. Uh, but contrarily, when maybe we don't have a grappler on and we're trying to get a car chased, their airplane's following it for us. They're throwing spikes on I-5 at a hundred and thirty miles an hour. So State Patrol's also risking life and limb and spending fuel money up in the air to try and help us with our stuff. So just in the sense of good mutual aid, we don't bill other agencies. And the reality is, is that one grappler net costs us three hundred and fifty bucks. So by the time we go through the entire process of sending someone a bill, we may as well have just ordered that, that net and, and put it back in. Takes five minutes to reload a net. So, um, instead, we've just relied on good mutual aid. Um, I don't know of an agency in this county that won't throw spikes for us, um, because a lot of times we don't wanna grapple at ninety-two miles an hour every time. The, after seventy-five, the manufacturer says, you know, it's, we don't, we try not to test that high kind of thing. So sometimes the risk and the reward is at that threshold. We're gonna do a grapple at ninety. Um, but ideally, we really wanna get the car spiked first, lower the speeds, then grapple it, bring it to a safe stop. So we need those other agencies to participate and not be like, well, if we, if we help, then we're gonna have to pay the county three hundred and fifty dollars. It's just, it's not worth the squeeze.
Thank you.
What was the, you might have already said this, what was the crime that you were, um, chasing that car for, the one that was at ninety-two? Like what?
Uh, looting, reckless driving, possession of a stolen vehicle. And then once we captured him, there was narcotics and a stolen handgun in the car. Yeah, the, the gun was stolen.
So that sounds like most of the fleeing cars, it's a loot, it's those same charges you just listed. What caused the officer to decide to deploy the grappler at ninety-two compared to other chases where maybe you would let him go because it's like too dangerous?
I believe in that one, the vehicle was driving in the oncoming lane around blind corners on Delphi.
Okay.
And so to continue that going, it was worth it to put the suspect at a higher level of risk. Yeah, maybe he gets seriously injured or killed hitting a tree as opposed to crashing head-on to someone who's unsuspecting on Delphi Road. Which if you've driven Delphi Road, you know, most of it is blind corners with trees. Um, so the moment that that intersection or that that, they, they basically hit that straight shot of Delphi just north of one, twenty-eighth, I think. Um, he, he basically just gunned it. And what it really came down to was the suspect hit the straightaway. And then the deputy hit, the sergeant hit the straightaway as well. And by the time he got underneath the car, they were going ninety-two. I think ideally, if he could have caught up faster, they would have gotten there faster. But it was a, it was quite literally a race down the, down the stretch. So.
Were they initially getting pulled over for like speeding?
Reckless driving. Yeah, Olympia Police Department tried to stop that car, um, for speeding, reckless driving. And then they actually got the plate returned. It showed the car was stolen.
Oh, okay.
So Olympia initiated the stop.
Yeah, and then the sergeant found the vehicle driving reckless, going a hundred miles an hour down Delphi Road.
Okay. So they were already going that fast before the lights even came on?
Yeah, for us. Yeah. I don't know about OPD.
Okay.
That was a, wait, the way that it came out for us was that there was a recklessly driven stolen vehicle going westbound on Harrison.
Okay. Um, how many cars will this put you at with like, that are installed with the grappler? Will this be all of your cars or are you getting close to that?
Uh, it'll be about half. Yeah. So we'll be at about, when it's all said and done, it's like roughly thirty grapplers if I've been counting correctly.
Okay.
So we'll be at about thirty. Um, yeah. That's a good, that's a good healthy ratio. I mean, that puts, there's just gonna be an automatic chance that there's a, there's a grappler somewhere working in the county at that point in time. So.
Uh, when you deploy the grapplers, are they reflected on your use of force dashboard on your website?
Not on the use of force dashboard, but on the pursuit dashboard that we're creating, it will be. It'll show the different techniques that we use, like how many grapples, star chases, pit maneuvers, TVIs, those kinds of things. Yeah. Even though we do report it, so it's a PDR document, I don't believe it's on the dashboard. Um, on the dashboard, we focused more on, on person-on-person use of force. Um, whereas that is, that is a use of force, but it's gonna be documented under, under a vehicular pursuit.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So if you guys?
I think so.
Thank you.
I think we're back next time too.
Okay, so next up, we have, uh, three appointments, actually four, that were, I think, just follow-up. Reappointments and appointments that we already discussed. Was there any questions from the board on, uh, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three? Just got kicked to this agenda. Okay, then let's go to vouchers, twenty-four and twenty-five. Any questions on those? Okay, let's go to department item six, Public Health and Social Services. Resolution of intention for Thurston County Long Lake Management District Number Fifty-One.
Good morning again. Jen Frey, Director of Public Health and Social Services. Um, this is, uh, seeking to pass the resolution for intention of Thurston County Long Lake Management District Number Fifty-One. The petition to create a new Long Lake Management District Number Fifty-One received the required, uh, number of signatures of the owners, which was at least twenty percent of the acreage contained within the proposed district. The district is proposed for a twenty-year period, beginning on Janu, a twenty-year period, beginning on January first, twenty-twenty-six and expiring on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. Forming a new LLMD Number Fifty-One to protect Long Lake water quality and beneficial uses will serve the interests of the public and property owners. The funds raised from annual special assessments or rates and charges to property owners for the first year in twenty-twenty-six is estimated to be three hundred and twenty-five thousand and will not exceed that amount. Annual charges will increase each year to adjust for inflation with a maximum annual escalation of five percent if approved by the LLMD Steering Committee and the Board of County Commissioners. However, the total funds raised in any single year will not exceed four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred per the maximum allowed in RCW thirty-six dot sixty-one dot one seventy. These limits may be amended if allowed pursuant to any legislative changes to that RCW that take effect during the twenty-year duration of the district.
So Stuart's out.
Stuart is out, so I don't have our content expert to answer any questions, but I will take any questions back.
Well, we've heard from the folks at Long Lake and this is a, a positive thing. They appreciate that we're doing this twenty-year period. And they can appreciate the continued support of their Long Lake Management District.
Cool. Okay, no questions, I guess. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Public Works is next. Increase a previously approved construction contract amount for Marvin Road Upgrade Phase One. Can we move that previous one to consent?
The department item, Long Lake Management District?
Yeah, can we move that to consent?
Any objection to moving Long Lake?
Yeah, I don't know why it's on, on department items.
Is there a reason why it was on department items?
I believe it was submitted as a department item because of the community interest in lake management districts. And they, these items typically happen, but there's no problem with moving it.
Historic LMD.
Well, let's be historic and move it to consent.
Yes, uh, I'm fine with that.
Expedia, inexpedia. That's great.
All right, let's go back to Public Works. What do you got, Matt?
All right, Matt Omsman, County engineer.
Here we is, Public Works Director.
Um, Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Director of Public Works to increase the previously approved contract amount, um, to active construction, who is working on the Marvin Road project that is under construction between Twenty-Second Avenue and Union Mills. Um, this request would increase the contract in the amount of three hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred dollars and increase the total contract amount to six million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Um, we provided a, uh, email briefing to the board, but the summary is that the bid proposal that the bidders bid on contained an error. Um, two of the, um, the unit bid items for concrete work had square feet and this should have been square yards. Um, yeah.
Math, again, back to the math, right?
So, um, we went back and we, um, changed the square feet to square yards. And we reran all of the contractor bids to make sure that it didn't change any of the bid amounts. And the, and the order of the bids from lowest to highest remained the same. But the problem is, is that we don't, we have the budget authority to finish the project. Where we have traffic impact fees to cover the requested three hundred and ninety-one thousand. What we don't have is the B-O-C-C contract authority to exceed the original ten percent of the contract amount. And so that's what we're requesting permission today to exceed, is the original ten percent.
Questions on that? Can we should close?
So you said the traffic impact fees cover this whole amount. Is that right? Okay. Awesome.
Sounds like. And that doesn't, that, that mistake doesn't like nullify the contract? Is the contract still?
No, it doesn't. We've, we've consulted legal on this one. And like I said, even after correcting the mistake, it didn't change the order of the bids.
And not that it's the right thing to do, but that doesn't give us the ability to say, too bad, that's the bid you gave us?
Well, we would have to, we'd have to, we'd have to negotiate it. There's, um.
Yeah, the, since, since the measurement is off, they would say, well, we said feet and they would only give you the feet. They would be short.
Oh, yeah. Here you go, the bridge is this. It's also the, it's also the magnitude of the. Okay, nevermind.
It's a pretty big difference. Is there any reason why this can't be on consent?
I would keep it on department items because it's a lot of money.
Yeah, I would keep it too.
And how do we make sure that it's not gonna happen again?
Um, it will not happen again. Um, we've already put, um, this is, um, we've already put measures in place to make sure it doesn't, additional QA.
Feet or yards? What measures?
Um, QAs, QCs. Obviously, I don't like coming up here for this item. This is the first time I've ever had to come. So it hurts my pride a little bit too. And honestly, staff is pretty upset because we take a lot of pride in the work that we do. Public Works does an awesome job at delivering projects. And unfortunately, mis, like, um, as your grand said, mistakes happen and, uh, all we can do is.
We use it as an opportunity, right? We're using it as an opportunity to, to shore up our processes and make sure, right, exactly. So.
And this was a mistake on the, the behalf of the bidder or, um?
No, this was, this was a county, this was a county, uh, preparation of our documents.
Oh, okay. So it just was a calculation.
Yep, right.
We've got more, more, uh, checks and balances now in place before those documents go out.
Well, I think important to remember too, if you think about the volume of contracting that Public Works does. The fact that we have somebody who has a tenure of twenty years, a couple of years as the county manager, but, or, excuse me. But in context, right, that we're talking about this, um, yeah. But still an opportunity. Right.
Thanks for saying that. I was gonna say the same thing. I wanted to highlight, Public Works does an awesome job. Um, I like to say that as much as I can because it's, it's true and the volume of contracts, just like the Assistant County Manager said, having a mistake here and there is totally normal. Um, I, my birth mom recently moved here from Nebraska and did the same exact thing when she asked the movers to come get her stuff. And they came and it was like trip, double or triple the amount they quoted her in. It was a huge deal. And so I'm like, this is totally relatable. It's, it's a.
Painful, but relatable.
Yeah, yeah. But luckily, the traffic impact fees cover it. So we're good. Um, so it's not a mistake that hits our general fund, luckily. Yeah.
And it is what it is, right?
Yeah.
It would have been.
And in the context of the overall project, it's not, it's not a, it's not a tough change.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, it's not, we're not really, it's just really a count, an administrative, the, the time we're taking to just fix it up, but.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, well, thanks, guys.
Thanks for understanding.
Mission reports after that. We adjourn. We have public hearings, two of them. First one is for precinct boundary changes and commissioner and district legal descriptions. This is auditor's office. I see auditor's staff. We've definitely had a comprehensive briefing on this, but, um, Mary Hall.
Good morning. Good morning. Um, we came to you on February twelfth and gave you the entire presentation. And that's what we will do at next week's public hearing. Um, every year, we're required to do precinct maintenance. It's based, basically due to city annexations and outgrowing the allowed size of our precincts, um, which is limited to fifteen hundred. So, um, we've had this information on our website. our precincts, um, which is limited to fifteen-hundred. So, um, we've had this information on our website since March eighteenth, and to date, we haven't had any questions or comments.
Any questions for the auditor? No, thank you so much for that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
My, my question, I, sorry, I should have spoke up earlier. Uh, Mary, or Auditor Hall, you'd, you'd mentioned to me that there was discussion in the past about moving these types of things in, uh, to more of an administrative level.
There was legislation introduced a couple of years ago that would have changed the procedure to where we only had to come to the board for approval if you wanted to discuss changes. Um, that was, that failed, that bill failed, so, um, we have to come to you every time, and really, we have to make these changes due to city annexations, so.
Okay, just wanted to put that out.
So if you ever want to work with us on a bill in the future, so we don't have to come to you six times, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, and then the second public hearing will be related to proposed ordinance amending code related to Thurston County Citizens' Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials, or Salary Commission, as we call it. Maria Ponte from H R.
Good morning again, Maria Ponte, H R Director. So we have posted this for public hearing. I have not yet received comments. Uh, the changes to the ordinance are to, um, update from three districts to five districts, uh, confirm members who's, um, are still in the same district and whose terms have not expired, and to also update the board-appointed, uh, members to have experience in personnel and not limit to like the legal and the labor, although we would still consider all of those, so that helps open up the pool.
I would like for there to be some type of inclusion of like the legal opinion, because, you know, I'm, when I read the WAC, it, there's a lot of different, you know, charter counties, non-charter counties, this, and which ones it applies, and some of them does seem to say very explicitly that they must be a legal professional and must be from organized labor. But then, and when it's explained to me further, there's some outs for that that I have to reread every time to try and pretend I understand it. So if just, we could have our, some statement from our attorney explaining how and why we can do this despite some of the requirements.
The ordinance is, is drafted, um, by legal, and, um, it does comply with the, the state's version of the salary commission, so ours mirrors what the state is doing. So I don't know if that answered your question.
It's, it's, you know, just reading through the WAC, it's confusing to me, but I'm not an attorney. I'm, maybe Commissioner Mensah thinks it makes perfect sense to him, but, I mean, I just read, there's several different paragraphs in there that refer to each other, and if, then, this, that, then the other thing, and, you know, there's some mathematical equation explaining it all that makes no sense to me. Uh, but, you know, there are parts where it says you have to have a legal professional, and you have to have a representative from organized labor, and if we're not requiring that, I was, I'm just wondering if there could be a way to explain that in layman's terms, so that.
I'll confirm with legal on my understanding that we're complying with, uh, state statute on that, so I can do that fairly quickly.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And if, if that happens to be an email or something, share it with the board, so if we could just see.
Yeah, and then that email could be attached on the April fifteenth meeting or something.
Okay.
Even if we do change that, I still would prefer to have a legal professional interro, because I, at least to try to meet the original intent.
Yeah.
Um, will there be any sort of presentation aside from basically what you've shared with us, um, for this public hearing?
Um, I was just planning on presenting what the changes are to the ordinance. I, I don't know anything beyond that that's required.
Okay, no problem. I was just curious if we would have, I have had, um, a couple constituents come to me with questions about this, um, and I've encouraged them to submit those questions as public comments, either in writing or come to the public hearing. So we might have some people come. I, there were, there were some concerns about, um, how to word the organized labor piece, and so, um, I've, when people do come forward to me with these concerns, I've shared with them that we did add the wording back in, but it's just not a required seat, um, as it's currently, as the draft is written. So we might have some people come and comment on that, just so you're aware.
Okay.
Um, the people are specifically from organized labor, asking that we keep a required seat for organized labor, so we might hear some of that next week.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, um, that would be.
Chair, I'm sorry, if I may, before we end, just run through the items that I'm tracking to.
Yeah, let's go ahead and.
From consent to Department.
To either, either pull into Department or alternatively have some staff. Be put on before the consent, but go ahead and go through the list.
So the items I'm tracking to do some sort of presentation from the consent agenda are Items Three, Four, Five, Seven, Eleven, Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, Nineteen. Am I missing Item Eight, Commissioner Claus?
I don't think so.
That was in your email. I just didn't really discuss it, when was that item?
Yeah, I would, I have the email up when we went through, and there were some I emailed you that I I chose not to, because, um, when I heard the presentation, it seemed like it was just a routine item, so, yeah. But you got them all. Thank you.
Could you repeat, repeat those one more time, please?
Three, Four, Five, Seven, Eleven, Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, and Nineteen.
You're bringing Department Item Six back into consent?
Yes, correct.
Wait, eleven? You said eleven?
Yes.
Oh, wait, I didn't actually ask for that one when we were here. I, I had, that was one I had in my email that I, because, um, I just at a glance saw that it was related to Grandma, but then when we heard the presentation today, it's about a wastewater treatment plan that already exists. So it's just improving something that we already have, not new development.
So not eleven?
Not eleven.
Not eleven, yeah. That's one I was not tracking.
Slow, Amy, just so that we all have the numbers one more time.
Yep.
So consent items Three, Four, Five, Seven, Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, and Nineteen. And just to clarify, Number Seven will be moved to Department Items.
I think they're all being moved to Department Items.
For this time, yep.
This time, until we talk about a different approach. And then we're moving, um, Department Item. Yes. Okay, then we'll have obviously Commissioner Reports and, or the public hearings, or, or after, depending on how we, um, we usually will break at three-thirty for the public hearing, recess the meeting if we're not done, just in case there's a group of people here to participate in the public hearing, so I'll continue with that practice. We haven't needed to do that recently, but this meeting might require that. So, um, that'll be that, and then we're up to Advisory Boards.
Thank you, Chair. There's just one item for today, uh, for this Wild Waste Advisory Committee. The City of Tenino has nominated Councilmember Irene Clam to be reappointed to their representative seat.
Okay, any questions on that, concerns? You can do that.
Okay, we can add this, uh, reappointment to the agenda for the fifteenth, then.
Consent calendar?
Correct.
On consent. Anything else on Advisory Boards?
Do you have an update on, uh, Timberland Regional Library? Are we making progress there?
Yes, we are. Um, folks are excited to interview, and, um, due to just scheduling with them, I think we will have a group interview, um, next week and a group interview the following week. So, and then, so we'll have a few go next week, a few the following week, and then we can, um, bring that in back to the board for discussion and consideration and see who would like to.
Any questions on T R L? Okay, then we're up to Commissioner Items, and there's two listed out. One is reports on external boards. I guess that's because we're not doing a check-in. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so does anybody want to start off? Commissioner Claus?
Yeah, I'll start off. I have a couple of things. I was the one holding down the fort last week, so, um, I attended a couple of meetings on behalf of my seatmates. Um, as far as external boards, I attended the T R P C meeting last week. That was the first time I've attended one of those, um, and that was great. I loved attending that one, um, learned a lot. And I did SWAC and Fair Board last week as well. Um, as far as subcommittees, I did the Data Subcommittee Meeting and the Education and Outreach Subcommittee Meeting for the Board of Health. Um, and then for community meetings, I, um, attended the Online Marine Vegetation Implementation Strategy Meeting. Um, that one was really interesting. We talked a lot about the estuary and plans for that. Um, and then I was a panelist on a Puget Sound Sage meeting for understanding, uh, municipal, um, officer roles. I also did a couple of one-on-one meetings, and, um, I toured the Lacey Maker Space, which was really fun. That's the first time I've seen that space, and they do a lot. Um, I was excited. I'm definitely gonna sign up to be a member, because you can pretty much make anything there. It's awesome, and, um, I'll be attending the Fix-It Fair as well. It's coming up pretty soon, um, which is a partnership with our Public Works team, so I'm really excited about that partnership with Lacey Maker Space and Public Works. Um, and then I also attended the WASAC Virtual Assembly this week, and my one-on-ones were with Mayor DePinto, um, the Sheriff, and Auditor Hall. And that was my week.
Commissioner Grant, anything?
Um, sorry, we didn't come completely prepared for this. Uh, no, I, I just don't think I have, um, I did, I was gone, so, you know, I've been out. Um, I will say that, you know, in, since the last time you all saw me, I attended, um, and I hopefully will have a chance to give another report on this, but, um, because I didn't come prepared for it as a Marine, but, um, I attended, um, the National, um, Association of Workboard Comp, Workboard, um, or Workforce Board, um, Conference, and so, um, spent a lot of time with our Pac Mountain, um, Executive Director, and, um, you know, learned quite a bit about, uh, what's going on nationally as far as workforce goes. Um, there will be some updates from Pac Mountain on some, you know, recent, um, you know, they're gonna be making some changes on a lease, um, and so we'll be hearing about that soon. I also, um, had an opportunity to meet with Senator Cantwell's staff and an opportunity to meet with Senator Murray's staff, um, while I was in D C, and, um, and then I did also attend, uh, the virtual WASAC. Um, I listened in yesterday on the WASAC legislative updates. Um, I had a lot of incredible, well, good information on what we should be worried about as far as funding and at the federal level, and so felt, um, pretty good about what, what I heard there. And that's about all I have done.
Commissioner Fournier?
Attended the WASAC meeting yesterday, where Wasalfo representatives talked about, uh, public health funding. I didn't feel good about it. I mean, there, there was a lot of, uh, more doom and gloom than, than I thought. Uh, attended Fire Commissioner meeting. Uh, there was not a lot, uh, to report back on what was going on there. There were various talks about, you know, upcoming wild land season and legislation that affects them. E D C Board Meeting was held at the Maker Space, where we had a guest of the Board, Department of Commerce Secretary, New Secretary Joe Nguyen. Uh, welcomed to the Board Meeting, included City of Lacy's manager, Rick Walk, uh, Director Nguyen, Nguyen, addressed the Board on the topic of working to build a strong ecosystem for entrepreneurial development and to ensure that departments operating support business development. He reported he was traveling around the state and meeting with business groups to gain insight. Uh, his, his goal was to go to every single Chamber of Commerce in the state, and, uh, and he's, he's working hard to do that. He, after, he was at ours, at the E D C, uh, meeting, I think I saw that he was at another, uh, group here recently in Thurston County, meeting with them. We invited him to a steady meeting. Uh, it was, it was good to hear from him, meet him. Uh, we discussed some of the impactful legislation that is going on with, uh, respect to the E D C. Some of their, a lot of their funding is kind of threatened, so there were some calls for, uh, advocacy that, that I and, and several other members of the E D C, uh, mobilized to assist with their, some of their state funding issues. Uh, there's some money for the scale-up program that is kind of undetermined if they'll be receiving. Uh, M R S C i- is always under threat every year, it seems like. Uh, they're preparing for Alliance Northwest Conference. Uh, it's something they participate in, and it is gonna be held in Tacoma, since Thurston County does not have a convention center. Uh, upcoming investor event, a venue scheduled April tenth, from four to three, held at Altitude Fifteen. If you're interested in attending, contact Michael Cade. Uh, there was a C B and I Business Report, and then the E D C is very thankful for the county designating it as its A D O again this year. It's very important to their organization and continuing to provide them the funds to do, uh, what we need them to do to further our economic development interests. And, uh, the next Board of Directors Meeting, we held April twenty-third, uh, at the E D C offices. Uh, in addition to that, I believe, it might be two weeks ago now, I also attended, what was it, one of my other ones? Oh, the Medical One, uh, Board Meeting occurred. Uh, it was a good meeting. Um, I don't even recall, we got an update on it that. There was some talk about kind of mapping out their, their future levy request, so, you know, we want that on our radar when we talk about, uh, our, our own revenue planning. We don't wanna kind of conflict with any of our, uh, associate organizations. Uh, that sums up my, my work. Thank you.
Okay, um, I guess I will touch on a couple of items. Um, I attended the Partners in Student Health Meeting. You've heard about that at the Board of Health. Um, all of our Board of Health members that are community members were present for that, and a lot of public health staff, um, along as, as well as, as well as different school districts, just sharing information about public health issues. Um, interesting meeting this morning, Innovative Justice. We had presentation from the Reentry Program from Graves Harbor, and they're able to fund through this really complicated braiding of different funding, reentry after release, that we don't really have in Thurston County. I was really impressed by that. Like, so we have a lot of stuff in the jail that we've built, but then, then it's like, it's kind of people are on their own to go to the resource hub or get connected, whereas in Graves Harbor, the same people that are meeting them within the jail are going out with them post-release and making sure things are square and they're connected up. So that was really interesting. I think everyone in the group was really impressed by that and wanted to explore that further. So I assume that we're, we're focused on reentry this year at, at the Innovative Justice. It's kind of our.
Have you guys talked about, there was, at our, um, Jail Modernization Task Force meeting, there was talk about, uh, some changes in like Medicaid, Medicare funding to be allowed to use for reentry stuff? Have you guys been talking about that?
That was touched on a little bit, yeah. I mean, that's, that was a big piece of what, how they did, what they were doing in Graves Harbor, and we definitely want to maximize that.
Yeah, and I, I'll say that I actually was preparing for the meeting this week. There'll be a, the jail work, task, workforce meeting going on, and I, that was something I also wanted to bring up, was that, yes, there is the ability to use Medicaid, and, and I think that maybe there might be an opportunity with what we're, with these changes that we were just hearing them talk about, where we might be able to loop all of that in and, and be able to actually utilize some of the reentry work that, that they're doing on a national level, and now Graves Harbor's doing it, too. So it's really kind of exciting.
There, there's a gentleman in our group that, and you know him.
Tracy?
No. Mo or something?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that, he would, he would potentially be able to come in and speak on it, and, and he seemed to be kind of the, the state's rep on, on, on a number of these things.
Yep, I do know him real well, so. That's exciting. I'm glad that you got an opportunity to see that, because it's a really incredible.
I really caught the second half. I was, it was like, I, at first, I was like, who is this talking? This seems really cool. And then I, so then I like, I'm on my phone in my car in a traffic jam this morning, and I'm like, looking at the agenda, and it's like, oh, it's Graves Harbor. And then I put all the pieces together, and I caught the main piece of what they presented there.
We call that wraparound, you know? I mean, it's, it's this, you know, instead of a, a cold handoff, it's a warm handoff.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and, uh, meaning that you really follow the person into the community to make sure that they're getting where they need to go.
Yeah, we were just like, how are you funding that?
And there is, there are funds available, um.
They were throwing out, Wayne kind of teased them, because I felt like it was listening.
Not this Wayne.
Oh, yeah.
No, Wayne, Wayne Graham.
Yeah, Wayne Graham.
And the prosecutor, who is the Chair of our Innovative Justice Group, he was teasing them, because like, I felt like I was watching a military presentation, because they love the acronyms. They're like, oh, that's F S C and C H G and R T F, and everybody's like, slow down, like, what are, I hadn't heard of any of those acronyms, but they have all these things, and they're able to take chunks of it, and they said braided together, and it was.
Braided funding, yeah.
Braided funding, but it was really. Braided funding, but it was really pretty complex.
Oh, yeah, I had our, the guy, the guy that was speaking on it was really, he was a really good presenter and he was entertaining and he, he was like, he butted in. He was like, you may be asking yourself, and you're like, yeah, I mean, the guy was good. I'd I'd love for, maybe, I don't know if your group would be the appropriate place for him to come in and talk, or us, or.
I think it might be a good idea for us to be thinking about getting a, uh, and maybe we all can talk about this offline, you know, or not offline, but. Not we all, but but you know, I can reach out to a couple of the partners, but because there really is, I mean, we've talked about that, you know, as I came on board around the opportunity for braided funding and it's complex and you know, and as we're um, but it is there. And it is just a matter of how do we, how do we um, how do we move forward to put it into place for us? Um, and so um I I think.
Well, I definitely, at that meeting, like, people were interested, like Nate Block from our team was like, I'm going to be calling you. I mean, so like conversations are going to come from what just happened this morning that I think will be productive, so that's good.
And it would be a good leader for this.
Two other quick things uh I wanted to report on. One was yesterday, so you guys remember, you know, we, our right-of-way operational funding from April court and the other projects is 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 expiring and we need that money in the budget. Of course, it's a tough budget, so we, there was the letter that went from Mayor Sullivan, Mayor Ryder, Mayor Payne and myself to the new incoming governor, like, hey, just so you know, the state made a huge commitment and you know, Governor Inslee put a lot of um, you know, clearing rights away and getting housing and trying to, so. Um, we asked for a meeting and we got that meeting yesterday and um with, not with the governor, but with three of his, all all of his policy advisors that relate to these topics. Um, so that was a good meeting. They were very, they seemed very understanding of where we're at and we did a good job, I think, of presenting where we're at and what their ask was is, can we get a breakdown of the numbers? Like, you know, we, what we know, what 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 was discussed in the meeting is that there's like a million something in the House budget and four million something in the Senate. Andy uh from Lacey seemed to believe that the four million number was a reasonable number to keep programs funded, but none of us really had like super specific dollar numbers at our um, you know, at our fingertips. So they want us to kind of compile a breakdown of like, bottom line, what do you guys need to keep these projects, you know, operating? And so we agreed to to kind of pull a kind of a one sheet together and I've talked with county manager and Mayor Payne. We thought the county in the, between Olympia and the county, we should probably be the ones that would have the numbers and best able to get those pulled together for the benefit of the governor's policy advisor, so that they know kind of what the bare bones need is to keep these projects afloat. So hopefully that will come together and we'll be able to get some traction there. And then lastly, while I was at, I was at a conference in uh UC Berkeley called Bioneers Revolution from the Heart of Nature. Um, it was pretty awesome. Uh, it was everything from real, from from really technical discussion to um to projects that are happening in different places, which is kind of a normal conference approach, to some really like inspirational stuff. They said, and I I kept wondering if I was hearing this right, there were a lot of tribal leaders there. They said there were a hundred and fifty-one tribes represented at this conference, which 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 they claimed was the biggest, like not necessarily the most tribal people, but the most number of tribes represented at one event in the history. So um I I can almost believe it because there was a huge tribal presence and like lots of panels that were led. Um, you know, that 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 were led by tribal leaders and so that was a big component of of what was shared at the conference. But while I was there, we did a a meeting, county manager's part of regarding the FIFA World Cup Fan Zone, and I was wondering if I could ask the county manager to maybe summarize that meeting just for the benefit of the board.
Yeah, absolutely. So we had an opportunity to talk with a representative.
Dylan or.
Yeah, he doesn't work for FIFA, but he worked for the organization that FIFA's working with to.
The Seattle.
Yeah, to work this out um in the the state of Washington. And so the conversation was around the need for them to have in Thurston County an entity that's going to be working as the host, so that they can uh work with them on a non-disclosure agreement so they can send the, or they call the handbook.
Playbook.
It has basically an outline of everything you can and cannot do when you're.
We haven't got playbook because we have, we don't have an NDA.
Yeah, it was kind of like a chicken and egg.
And we were like, well, we don't want to pick. And I, yeah, and I was like, I didn't want to pick the 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 project manager till I sort of knew what was in the playbook because that would help us match the right organization to the right. So that was why we, they agreed to have this this extra meeting with us to kind of share with us some, answer some questions.
Yeah, and so uh the outcome of that, we already have a meeting scheduled, uh I think it's later this month um with a lot of stakeholders within Thurston County that would be helping with the fan zone concept. But there was a decision um at that meeting to engage a few folks and have a separate meeting with the mayors and um some organizations that we could identify as the host agency to take this on, get the NDA. They may not stay the host agency, but we just need to get that mechanical piece done so that we can get the playbook and then begin to plan. The other aspect of it was deciding on which location the fan zone would take place. Uh, two concepts uh that we need to speak to the port about and then uh at the rack for the city of Lacey uh to determine which one would actually be the most viable. And there's some decisions about how many games are actually going to show in the fan zone and if there's going to be a lot of games we're showing, are we going to leave the equipment up? And how does that affect the special event or the impact to certain venue? So there's some components that we're doing the research on. Uh, there was, I think, City of Lacey and City of Olympia agreed to have some conversations with a few folks and then get back to us. So I think we're closer to having some actual understanding of what it's going to take to actually put on a successful fan zone when we meet with the stakeholders later this month.
It seemed like the consensus was that like the ideal location is the like where they do the South Sound Block Party.
Yeah, the back, the backdrop.
The backdrop is incredible and you get transit and everything there, but then of course that requires coordination with the port and all that. So like, we need, you know, we definitely needed to have like plans B and C. The other Port Plaza area where they do like Pride would be one possibility and then the Rack is a possibility. But the 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 games, you're required to have it operational during the six Seattle games. You, other groups, you know, if it's working well and you've invested all this like infrastructure, like and people want to go, then other, the other US games and then ha- maybe potentially the semifinal and final type thing. I mean, you might want to operate it more often because you're making, you're making money and it's awesome. You know, it's great for the community and you know, it's all, it's all set up. But again, you have a minimum requirement. And those games are scattered over like three weeks. So I mean, you're going to have to deal with the the infrastructure set up over a period of.
Logistics and yeah, how that plays out. So our next step is we got to get our playbook together um and then identify location.
Manager and location.
And those two things will be uh important to then getting all the other stakeholders, which would include, we're inviting the tribes and the port, um the downtown.
So downtown alliance was suggested.
The Chamber, um EDC, Experience Olympia and beyond, so probably a large group of folks that come together to talk about how to make this successful.
Was there any further discussion about a base camp being located here?
There was.
Was, and City of L- of Lacey has put in an application with the FIFA, thanks to Commissioner Mahia who got the contact.
Awesome.
Coordinated to send it to Mayor Ryder and City Manager Rick Walk, and he jumped on it and submitted an application for it, and so it's being considered.
Very cool.
Who's the organization that's signing the NDA?
That's to be determined.
So we had to figure out.
Oh.
To be determined, yeah.
We don't have anybody in mind or?
Well, they would, we have people in mind, but like they would like it, you know, they wanted it to be like, oh, we designate who's going to run this whole thing and then they, then they would contact and do this NDA. Well, we're, you know, with our, with our visitor bureau is being, you know, it's small staff. The executive director hasn't been selected, like. The the, some of the groups that have been obvious choice, and it hasn't always been the visitor bureau. He actually, he went through every single, um, we spent a considerable amount of the meeting actually where Dylan went through every single other fan zone and who they've picked. And it's been, and and kind of how they're structuring it, and it's been all over the map.
I like the porch and dirt.
Well, that's, that's part of the conversation, but that's why we can't speak to it because. We have to have some. Those are being considered, yeah.
Because they did a great governor's ball. I mean, in order for, you know, that took.
And that was brought up, actually, exactly.
Just not ready to announce.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do that and so there's some conversation.
Yeah, that's right. Makes sense.
The mayor's stepping up in the chair to um have that conversation with Dylan. Probably, I think, the biggest step forward we've had to date, because now we understood what the delay was. And fortunately, unfortunately, we're not too far behind other jurisdictions, but we just got the playbook.
At the NACO meeting, it seemed like we were even ahead of the curve for most everybody else in the nation almost, except for like Atlanta.
Yeah, the ones that have it.
Right.
Yeah, not, a lot of places aren't doing what we're doing, trying to spread this, these fan zones and trying to spread it across the whole region and stuff and capitalize on the influx of people that will be coming.
So there's some, I think, ground we need to make up quickly with getting that NDA, getting the site selected, getting that group together to determine who's going to take the lead and how the work is going to be distributed. We look to make some progress and then report back to the full board on how that's developing.
Okay, well, that's the end of our agenda this morning.
Uh, one item.
Yep.
Uh, Associate Development.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
Yeah, this is more of just information. Uh, the board did take action to uh designate EDC as the county's Associate Development Organization. And so with that comes a fifty thousand dollar contribution that the county makes for the activities that they do. Just wanted to put it on the board's radar that we've, um, Michael Cade from the EDC submitted that invoice and we'll be paying that invoice uh in the next week or so.
Okay, straightforward, we're good.